Like you said, we start.
Yeah. Call this meeting in order.
Aaron.
Yeah.
Lee.
Here.
Charlie.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
Scott.
Here.
My due date is to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic of this series. One nation. We're repeating, I guess. Okay, so everybody get a chance to look the plow contract over.
That our attorney.
Comments on it?
Um. Our base rate went up quite a bit. The hundred and fifty seven thousand change.
And that gets paid out in September.
So, yeah, so there used to be what, December? You know, they want to base that in September. By this buyer. The second or so, but. I mean, right now, you're looking at. Three year contract. Town's guaranteeing four hundred and seventy one thousand dollars. If we have a hard leaner. The time and materials are operational, great, went up for trip. Then we're getting paid extra. So, I mean. Who knows, you know, you don't know when it's gonna be, but at least our base pay is. Getting back to. What it was. For folks, and if we go over, we could be making more, who knows? But, uh. And like I was telling Joan. You know, if it's so sideways. At any point, there's, there's a lot.
Lots can get out.
We get out sixty days. You know, I mean. I mean, if you look at it. Last year was two, two hundred eighteen thousand. Roughly. Is what we made between following the county, the village, and, and Genesmore. We got four guys that basically paid for the man.
Right.
Without side contract. That doesn't put a lot of burden on the taxpayers. I mean, they're all, we're all taxpayers, it goes one way or another, but we're getting influx from other government there.
You're paying. Paying the county, then the county's paying them instead of coming out of the town tax, but it's the same.
Right, but what I'm saying, you know.
You're not double paying. Because if we didn't do it, we'd be still paying the same county tax.
Right. So, I, I mean. I've talked to. Other highways different tenants, and some of them, their big three went down. And I don't, you know, so some of them aren't happy, but. I don't think we're in a bad situation.
And it's still the same nowhere, as I understand it, we have to plow all roads. It's not like a mileage.
So legit, so this is what you gotta look, what you gotta look at this. You know, I'm just kind of a common sense kind of guy, but.
As am I, there was a lot of controversy.
Normally, when we go out, I call the guys out, they go all their route, they do the same route every time, pretty much. Clockwork, you know, we got people that say, we know when the truck's gonna buy our house. So all the roads are getting covered with, if we have to run a night truck for two or three hours. Okay, we might lose on that end of it. But there's not, every time we roll, we get paid for salt and sand, where sometimes if it's going hard, we don't put it down. Until it's done. Might, maybe we'll just do hills and intersections. Because there's no sense of putting it down if you're gonna follow it up. I, I mean, you gotta. The time is always gotta pay something to follow routes, if it means a couple hours at night with the night truck. I think it'd all come on wash, I mean, you guys are the board, but.
The family's dragging all the roads and plows out.
Yeah.
Absolutely. Well, I agree with that. The moment contract, I think, has gotta change, but that's a different time, different, so anyways. I, I agree with that.
That was just the one year this time, right?
It's totally valid, but. We travel the same speed whether the fouls are in the air or down, actually sometimes slower when, when they're in the air.
The bounce.
Because of the bounce factor. And you know what, that kind of weight will determine the truck. So. I, I mean, I don't. I don't see anything terribly wrong with it, I know one of the highway supervisors said that I'm building this. With the county. Cap home, and he and I talked extensively about this.
I just lost this one.
Is anybody on it?
No. That's our attorney seeing those contracts.
The. That's a phone.
You have two windows open person.
I'm sorry, what?
There's two windows open person. I looked at it, I mean.
I mean, they're not.
One is, you and the guys are happy, but they, I think it's fine, and, uh. Is there any more word around the village getting new trucks?
I have not heard yet. I, yeah, they're gonna buy a five fifty four with a boss meatball. For the week, but. That is gonna be an interesting dilemma. But I say that we hold on to that truck. Solid back to them. I wouldn't give them satisfaction. I'll hold on to it, and if they call us in, then, then they're gonna pay us time and materials. I think it's a very way to go about it.
Is this our last year without them, or?
Yes, it is. The natives are already rested over there, but I pulled them into our last year bomb. And their crew doesn't wanna do it.
They expected that, because that's why they're looking at a truck.
What's that?
So I thought they were expecting that, because that's why they were buying a truck.
Yeah, but they weren't talking about buying a very good haul truck, it was another type.
Small, right, so they don't have to get a C L.
But they're, by the way, their five fifty has been down, is down, we're down to one truck for three guys. Who care? No.
What about the ambulance? I think right, the ambulance are home.
Yeah, they could do that. But. We wanted to park the news, man. Lots of Band-Aids. I still, I don't know about the, you know, the village, but that, that's gonna be. On the horizon, but as far as right now. So I, I will tell you that, um, when they took Marble Croft Road back from us at one time. That really made Joe's route really inconvenient. Because that was his main trump line. My old route is Sterling Station was the main trump line to get to Wright Cracker. So it, it, I mean, how are you even gonna do, I didn't do a little state road. Yeah, we own the middle, they own both ends.
So. What I'm saying, I know, I know, especially this year, you guys aren't exactly. Overflying with help. Just so once you guys get strapped out with a hundred, hundred and fifty hours a week, you can road's clear.
I got one young guy, it was a. A younger guy, everybody's young in me, but. Um, he just got a C D L A, and he wants to, uh, drive, he, he almost worked part time. He was, he's worked for two years in, in the wing seat. He just went to bosie's, got his class A. And, uh. He stopped the other day to give me his new license. And he wants to get worked into a backup driver. I was like.
For Randy?
Huh?
Not Randy.
Randy.
Point.
No.
Okay.
No. I don't think you ever had.
Or not, you have a judge, judge, judge.
No, no. Uh, no, it's Dave Scott.
Okay.
Well, he's been working with Tom.
Yeah.
Yeah, kind of.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, he's worked, he's worked with us and.
Preferably, he's familiar with roots and things like that, the roots.
He's gonna have to learn to designate roots, because, you know, he's broke with a bunch of different guys, but. Most important part of all that is, he's worked with the guys, the guy can work with him.
Kid, he's your age.
I don't know how the younger than that, he's in his forties.
Dave?
Young guy, young guy.
Nah.
Not, not the one eyes, or not his son.
No, his son, he's older than me, isn't he? No, okay, I thought he was, I'm sorry.
So I, I had another young guy, um. He's turning eighteen in September, he could run lane. So.
So you're building up your trail.
Well, yeah, I mean, Kyle's wife, Claire. Been waiting for him the last two years, but she's due in September. So she's not.
Not room for a car seat in there?
But, uh, so, yeah, we've got some, I think we'll be all right in hell.
That was my, my only concern between the village and the county, and our own town, it was. Spreading your guys to.
Well, we had five drivers.
Okay, good.
I mean, because the. I'm still gonna get a haul truck, once we're on. I want Chris Harris to learn all the routes, and while he's doing that, I'm gonna go and follow the village. I'm not gonna do that on a petty basis, but I'm not gonna get out of practice at it either. Well, if I gotta get sick or hurt, sure, I gotta slide behind the wheel.
Yeah.
I appreciate that.
Yeah, that's, that's. Very honorable of you to do that.
Well.
Some people, they say no.
Well, I'd be honestly, if days when I ask you to wait on the phone, I'd go, Paul, some film.
Definitely very relaxing.
Right, so, I mean.
Probably helps with the, the report with the guys, too, that you're out of the office and working for them as well.
Oh, yeah, I don't, like, we stuck in the office anywhere and have to, but unfortunately, I have to. But, uh, so. Other than that, I, I mean, it's, I don't know, when they got to have this backup, of course, I keep getting. Messages from the county. One signature, but I, so today I got fed up with them, and I emailed back saying, only after board approval. And I'll let you know when I have it.
This had been sent out back in the middle of June.
A lot of people didn't get it.
We never, yeah, a lot of towns didn't get it. So then.
And this is how efficient they are, they sent me an email wanting everybody to correct their email address so that they could get stuff to us.
So if you got the wrong email, you're not gonna get the email.
That was kind of my point.
Yeah.
Yeah. But anyways, so I don't think, I mean, if you want Kevin to look at this.
I didn't, I mean, I. I didn't think you needed to, because it was basically the same one as last time, just with the figures being changed. So it's just updated figures, pretty much. So, so I didn't, I mean, I don't really feel there's a need to pay Kevin to look at it, nothing has changed really about what we're doing or anything. Other than the numbers, that's Doc Kevin's.
He's not gonna look at the numbers.
He's not gonna look at the numbers.
Well, yeah, it, it reads to me like it's pretty much. So I do know that the provisions, every year there's an operational plan, which, if we give the men's wages. Same contract, full contract, and they adjust, that's why it went up a little bit this year.
Because wages went up.
So that's built in every year, by the way I read it, I'm not aware.
That's what I thought, is it.
So that's the way I read it, so. And like I said, if, if worst case scenario, this thing goes sideways and we get a sour taste in our mouth, we fire off letters saying we don't wanna do it. But.
We need to do to admit. Why are we not gonna do it anymore, bro? Yeah, so I didn't.
Say it's not working, just tell us.
Right, I, I, I mean, but, so, when I came in, we were still doing a little following, so I did a plow wise. It's really good deals, what we each set to do all the time, and then. When you just fire them down there in an email, and. And it goes month by month. So I know Dan's gonna screw as well, but if Pat gets a spring and they never wanna pass, but you got the acceptance every month.
Yeah.
So you can never be more than a month out. On your acceptance.
Exit approved every month.
Yeah, I mean, once it's approved, they approve your pay, the way I read it. So.
Any other questions? I get resolution, some most important res.
You do?
I do.
Oh.
Okay, there's a blank pay, uh, line. Unlike the. Resolution number adopted by, uh, moving held on that date. They're saying that this number twenty two removed. How can you throw it in if it's a PDF? Signed document. A blank, so we get phone. But according to Kurt. And somebody tried to hand it to the counter and it wasn't accepted.
Yeah, they're, they're very cold potato, they. They took the hard copy down, because they're, they're, has a hard time trying to get it around.
But that's the date, that should be the date, though, that.
Great, but if you do this electronically, it's blank. We've run into this before with previous, previous contracts that. Missing dates, missing whatever. That's my only thing that I have.
I could make it all tomorrow, if I know.
How to fill that in.
I can call that written.
Okay, because. That's.
Test her how we fill it, we'll have to put today's date and the resolution number.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I don't.
We can't fill it?
No, because we can't. If the P D F, not the way we could extract it, or is I gotta hit Ctrl P or something, and I printed it, but I couldn't save it.
Yeah, it's weird how they do that, because it says after you sign it, then you'll be supplied a PDF, a printable PDF copy.
After we both sign it.
After, and, and I saw it, so I said, Brittany, I said, no, that's not how we're gonna do this.
Last year they mailed, mailed us.
Correct.
Yeah, well, you're electronic. It, it, it's not all there.
It could be in a different format, where you can edit it.
They think, sent this in a Word document? Yeah, but they wanna send it in a PDF, and the only way you could tell is, is.
You got anything in your email yet? Because they sent it to me first this time, the moment contract, they sent it to you first.
Right, no, I didn't, I got the email that she got about, they were sending that.
Yeah, so now.
No, I got it, yeah. So I got it too, but I'm not gonna sign it until you sign it.
Right.
And then they could.
Right, but it seems like you should send it first, and then I sign it, it's just weird how they did it, it's. Because when I contacted Ryan, I said, no, they should send it to Scott. And then he contacted me back and said, no, they sent, he sent me a text, no, they sent it to you first.
Right.
So, I don't know, I think they're.
It's whatever they're trying to.
Yeah.
They're treading waters, they don't know what they're doing.
So. I could call her tomorrow and find out how we're gonna put that in.
Add that in there.
Well, can we make a resolution?
To sign that.
I may not.
I mean, get in that date, in the resolution number in it.
I'll make that.
Most better.
Here, yes, Lee.
Yeah.
Charlie.
Yeah.
Kelly.
Yes, Scott.
Yes. So if we talk to her, I know what we gotta do, then just let.
Yeah, I'll bring that to. For a thank you.
What I'll do is, once he figures it out, I'll fill it in, let's say, send it. A Word document, then a, or a mailbox. Or his, or whatever.
Or you might be able to add it. Before we sign it.
Electronically, yeah.
Correct.
The problem I ran into is my contact person's not the person that generated the email, so it, it is like. It's a who's on person.
Because I thought that Brittany was supposed to be a charter, and she made it sound like somebody else does this.
She's gonna generate the email, and she's the only person that can, can change the email, and it's like. A lot of people.
Everybody down there, if they find out. The same person did two, two things, and somebody's gonna lose their job.
It's, yeah, it's gotta be like a Chinese lawyer, attorney, by one or two times. So, but now, al- already, she's done pretty good at getting back to me if, if I don't get to talk with her. Probably, he told them on. Fill in those blanks and.
Or, then we'll be sure it's in time to get.
Yes, I don't, yeah, not yet.
That's why we wanted to have the emergency meeting, was because it was. Already according to them, passed due. And we wanted to get it done, so we can get. It's all processed, we make sure we get it in, forward to the payment.
Well. They say it's passing, but here's the thing I can't understand, it's like, when we deal with this one. Uh, the, they have twelve companies, they send you an invoice, they want a red receipt. So I have to re-buy us, we got red. Why doesn't the county do something?
It's the same plan as this.
They should have a red receipt, so they, they know we got it.
Yeah, exactly.
Because a lot of towns, I guess, we weren't the ones, they were sitting around going, hey, we're a pulp doctor.
Yeah.
I didn't know about it, so I was talking to Pat, and he says, yeah, we just signed it the last time it's for me, and I'm like.
You can get a thing for your email that was saying, was red, like a verified kind of.
Well, so.
Without even having them having to reply, it automatically tell you that they've read it.
Yeah, oh, I forget.
Yeah, but for business, what they do, is they make some invoice. You, but you go to pulls out of it, well, you, once you've read it, you go to pulls out of it, boom, they want a red receipt, so you have to say, yeah, I read it. And that way, you can't say, hey, I never got that invoice.
Yeah.
They can say, oh, yeah, I got this ready. Pretty soon.
Yep, that makes sense.
So, they can attach, deliver, real easy, that, read receipt.
No, that's a dumb problem.
Yeah, exactly, that's what I mean, if they're sending out contracts, they should make sure this is where it's gotta go.
Or they at least should have sent. You know, another follow-up email, hey.
Right.
We didn't receive your signed contract yet, do you plan on, or Brian should have reached out and said, hey, are you gonna sign the contract this year?
I think that, uh. Brian's, it's like, maybe not in charge of getting it sent out, I think these two, the two, uh, office help are. But I don't know, they're talking to each other, or what's going on, but anyways, when I heard that Pat. That's when I called you, I said, hey, have you seen anything?
Yeah.
That's when I contacted Brian and said, hey, we haven't seen anything. So. And I went back through all my emails.
At least, yeah, at least Pat said something to you, we've been in the middle of October.
Yeah.
Hey, we're the bulk contractor.
I don't think they would want to go on that, but anyways. So I think we got time, I mean.
All right.
Um. Yeah, well, I got one thing on your, you know, here. A meeting with Auctions International tomorrow, we'll get rid of that surplus stuff. We've got the ninety five international. Um, the O eight pickup. The old Rashad Moore in the two, uh, Sam. Now, I don't know what you guys intend on doing with that money, but I just wanna show you a few things here. Our guys were bringing our deep in ear drops in good shape. This wrench was hanging on the wall when Jim Sherman was to the buyer.
You had to auction that.
As you can tell, it's been raised back together.
Yeah.
It does not fit true anymore, and this is still one of our mainline mint wrenches. Last fall. We have an S and K socket, a quarter inch drive. It's been there as long as I've been there. It's so old. It just spin on the nuts, so we asked for a new quarter inch drive.
Wouldn't set that, yeah.
Quarter inch drive. Ratchet set, and this is what we got, can you read?
It's for a pro.
Yeah. It's nineteen dollars and ninety nine cents for a three quarter, or a quarter inch ratchet set. Now, it's pretty insulting for. I just wanted to show you, because this is the tools, we asked for tools, we weren't allowed to go shopping. To give any direction as to what we needed, but this is what we got. A twenty dollar toolset. We are working on quarter million dollar trucks.
Right.
Now, Scott, your mechanic's up there, what, every box up there probably says Snap-on on it.
They have.
Ninety percent of them.
Ninety percent.
If this was Snap-on, it'd be a four hundred dollar set.
Can you give us a, like, a list of what you guys need?
Well, what I'm proposing is, this, all this. Equipment up here is surplus, I'd like to see some of that money come back to our highway department, so we can buy the tools that we need to work on this stuff.
Absolutely.
It's kind of insulting when we all have better tools at home.
Right.
I mean, we put kingpins in the truck last year, there's not many, I mean, nobody does that.
No.
They send it out, we haven't sent, well, one truck to stadium other than a recall. We do everything in, in-house that we can, unless it gets the hardcore computer stuff. But we are lacking in the tool department. You know, I, I could see the town. Real soon. Probably. To start. Five thousand.
Did you get, did you get estimate it all for?
That meeting with the guy tomorrow morning, I mean, more than that, I think, out of everything. But, you know, if we, if I had five thousand dollars to buy tools for these guys. It would be a damn good start, it's not like we don't have any tools, but they're getting old.
I think, uh.
I think we just, like, you're meeting with the two old guys tomorrow?
No, the meeting with Auctions International got lost, I just kept thinking that we got this money that isn't. Designated money.
It's earned its keep.
It's earned its keep, but I think that money. I don't know if it's possible, but I think it should stay in the department, so that we can buy tools to maintain our equipment.
How would that?
I have no problems with it, but I would say you just need to make sure from an accounting standpoint, to me, it sounds like D A.
Because when that.
I think it's going into A, it seems like D A, I have no problem supporting. The guys having the right tools to work with, none whatsoever. Five thousand, ten thousand, whatever it takes. You hear me being penny wise.
We've got. Well, Joe Furman worked as a mechanic before he came working here, came to work for the town. We had to pressure test a, uh, coolant system on a truck, he brought in tools from home, so we could do it.
Right.
And we found the leak, if we had to run it to stadium at a hundred and fifty bucks an hour for them to look at it.
You guys are saving tons of.
Yeah, you're preaching to the choir for me.
Well, I just, I don't know the right way to go about it, I just want, I got people going, it's like, this nice. It, it should say highway money, but it's surplus, but not highway, and you could just let it sit in the weeds until it disintegrated. Right, or if we get something, I'm gonna put back into our department as well, I want to.
Yeah, Pat, Jack, we're just gonna have the reason.
Would we have to make sure where it was bought from, like, what fund bought it?
I, you know, this is sounds parallel to, remember when we did Paul, was the superintendent did logging out back?
I know, I used my chainsaw to cut trees.
Oops, but, and my recollection was that that money ended up going into the highway, so I think it's just from, yeah, it's just from an accounting standpoint. I totally think it makes sense. Yeah, the, the way department needs to.
Kitchen mold they have to put it into, but.
Right.
And, and I, when we did the logging, we didn't have a big chainsaw at the time, I was bringing my saw.
Right.
To cut the roadside trees.
Right.
We cut the cherry, and I told Paul, make sure you tell him, or with one stipulation, we at least get a big saw out of there, we still have that saw.
So is there a line on the budget where it would be four tools for the highway?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yes, it's gonna, right.
No, I mean, is there this.
Should be a tool or else.
Like, I doubt it, I'm gonna say usually it's.
It's gonna come out.
To point there, so it's gonna be.
The subcon.
Right, so the only thing we'd have to see, because I'm thinking, if, if you sell this stuff, when are you thinking it'll sell? Within thirty days or sixty?
I, I'll move on tomorrow, like. And if we're not happy with the price, we can let it roll again, I believe, I'm meeting with the guy for the first time tomorrow.
Yeah.
I've already filled out the condition reports. And, uh, so, he's, he lives in iron, he's gonna stop tomorrow morning, we're gonna go over it all. And like I said, I don't know what some of this stuff's gonna bring, you know, it's an auction.
Yeah.
But it's. We got a new truck hopefully coming this fall. We got all this stuff stored inside, it's just. Number, number eight, the old truck, it's giving us all for this town. You know, it's time to move on, the starter's gone out, and we have to tell it, get it started, I'm not gonna put that kind of money into that truck.
I think it's just a matter of. If it goes into the fund, just. I mean, I would think it's.
Right.
And we can ask that, right?
Yeah, like you say, I, I just, but.
I don't, I think that'd be great, I'd say, whatever we sold that stuff for, I would say, put it towards.
Put it in tools.
Yeah.
You know, it's, it's hard to ask a guy to work on something that's not his, and the tools are his junk, I mean, I, I would, I wouldn't buy that for.
I'd buy that for my, for my grandson to work on his bicycle, he showed us for his whole, because he's gonna lose them all.
Right. If you can't expect a guy to take pride.
For you.
I mean, I can show you, our oldest truck in the main line is, is a thirteen.[1746.31] Iris got a thirteen same year, I, thirteen was my truck, Brandon. Iris had been sent out. Spoisoned out in the sand less than a payment, ours has never been sent, sent out, and ours looks better than hers. These guys take pride in your work.
Yes, they do.
They need the right tools.
And to, for. If you know the cost of things. You know, good tools versus big payments. So.
I'd also like to see, I don't know how we do it, where the money comes from, but. Christmas guy or something, they have a Christmas party for the guys, or I mean, I know it's a hard time of year to plan or something, but. Let, well, let them all go to, you know.
What if we had a Christmas and July party for them?
Do something, I mean.
Long now, yes, absolutely.
Yeah.
And then they don't have to worry about the weather.
Everybody take their wife's bath and have a decent dinner, barbecue, whatever you guys want to do, I think, you know.
Maybe a. A pre Thanksgiving dinner or something.
Yeah.
I, I agree.
Why don't you ask the guys what was the time they done with the.
Charlie and I have all.
And then.
Then they really appreciate what a good job they do, right?
I know, I know, all too well, all that can be.
I think that's something you guys ought to think about, though, I think.
Yeah, we got it. Um. Man, that's all I got, I was wanting to just want to, you know, I kept thinking about that, and if you guys agree, that'd be great. I know we help the guys out.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I didn't expect, you know, I know it's gotta be a, a pigeon or something, but.
Can um, somebody wanna make a motion for a resolution that any funds we get for the stuff sold with auction will use for. Buying tools?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second. Eric?
Yeah, Lee.
Yeah.
Charlie.
Yeah.
John.
Yeah.
Scott.
Yes. One other thing, did we, we voted to have the cleanup day? Can we make a motion for you to have it high square?
Hmm.
Okay.
It's, it's in there, it's all.
Okay, so it's all.
This is the weekend after Monday, right?
Tonight, we're nine. On my top. At the board or whatever, Brenda, we're gonna have, same team as before. Still gotta call carriers and see if they'll bring the can over for scrap, last year they just did it for nothing. Brought the can over to throw the scrap in, scrap metal for carriers. Same like scrap, whatever. Well.
Can I bring up one other thing? I know it's, it's not, we're not acting on it, but I just wanna let you know at the last town board meeting, it was brought up again about dog control.